Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of June 26, 2012. I'd like to thank Garden Club for the flowers they always supply for our meetings. Very nice. A roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell here. Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Tammy Yuki, please lead us in the pledge. Announcements this evening. I do have a very short update on the Crestmore neighborhood. Work is continuing in the Crestmore neighborhood to begin final decommissioning of line 132, the pipe installed in 1948. PG&E is extracting and testing the liquids remaining in the old pipe. Work is expected to be completed by the end of this week. There are some road closures and detours associated with PG&E's work, as well as with the underground infrastructure replacement work being done by the city. We appreciate the community's patience as we continue this critical work, and we will continue to update you as things arise. Thank you very much. Presentations. This evening, we will receive a presentation from Scott Lawrence, Superintendent of San Mateo Union High School District on the district's facility planning.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to apologize upfront. I'll probably call you board members, just because that's the group I'm usually talking to.
You can call it worse than that.
And I was -- had the good pleasure of sitting in meeting with Connie and talking about the need for us to inform you about one of the things that's sitting in front of our school board right now, and that is the potential relocation of Peninsula High School and the consolidation potentially of our district office and other maintenance and operations types of activities. I know you have a lot to talk about, and there's a lot of information that I could share. We were -- Ms. Jackson and I were talking about how this is really fascinating work for me, and I love getting into this very deeply. Sometimes what happens, though, is that I get really excited about some of the information, and I go way too deep. So I'm going to try to give you a brief overview of what is sitting in front of the board and give you some information about what the options are of sitting in front of the board and the timeline. And then what I'd really like to do is here, answer questions. I have a number of my staff here tonight, and answer any questions that you may have and listen to any comments that you might want to share with us that I can take back to the school board. I was hired here in San Mateo three years ago, and if you can remember, three years ago, one of the first things that we had to deal with was that the school district had about $75 million in what were called COPs, Certificates of Participation, that were weighing very heavily on our general fund. The paying off and the feesing of those things created a situation where we were looking at trying to figure out how we could find that sort of money to pay off the debt so we could put the money back into the school district. Well, one of the things that we started to look at was what we could do with one of our assets, and one of our assets was the Peninsula, the Crestmore site. And so we went through the 7-11 committee, and I actually walked into the middle of that and spent a number of meetings up here in the San Bruno area with people sharing their thoughts about what we should do with the Crestmore site or not to do with the Crestmore site. Well, instead of going through and following through with the idea of what we could do with that asset, we went in a different direction, and we passed -- we put on the ballot and we passed a bond measure called Measure O. And in that, what happened was is that we were able, through the generous vote of our community, we were able to get the money for that $75 million in COPs and pay it off. And since that point in time, we've really not had to worry too much about debt. We're in excellent fiscal shape. The district is very easily prepared to face what's going to come up, we think, in the next few years as far as the state budget. But one of the other things that we did in Measure O is we decided that it was also time to do the last two big projects as far as the district was concerned. Over the last about 10 years, we've put almost $600 million of investment into the various different schools in our school district, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see the Cappuccino site over the course of the last year or so. In about two weeks, they're going to be moving back into almost every facility on the campus except for the theater, and it is a phenomenally beautiful campus, probably one of the more beautiful campuses in the entire Peninsula, but that's with about $80 million of work being done on it over the last three years. So a lot of positive things are going on, but the last two projects and the last two things that we kind of said we were going to do was we were going to try to find an alternative site for the Peninsula students. Crestmore is very nice and has a location, but the actual buildings are starting to fall apart, and we haven't put much into them over the course of the last, oh, 20, 30 years. The other thing that we decided we were going to do is the last big thing where superintendents kind of go to get fired, is to rebuild our facilities, our district office facilities, our maintenance operations, technology, all those things. And we can do it because we're effectively at the end of our construction program across the entire district. Well, the board is coming up with some of the -- I'll go ahead and do this. The board is looking towards considering three basic options as far as the district office facilities and the Peninsula High School. The first one is, the first goal is we would like to move the Peninsula site, if possible, to a more centrally located location on the Peninsula. It's a challenge with about 2/3 of the students that come to Peninsula being from effectively the San Mateo Burlingame-Milbury corridor, right along El Camino-Rollins Road in that area, and down towards San Mateo High School. So there's a large group of students, and later on in the PowerPoint presentation and some other documents I sent you, you can see the concentration of where the students are. So it's difficult for the students to get up to Peninsula, and we bus, but if it rains, we'll lose 40% of the students on a daily basis just because it's difficult for the students to get up there. Most of them don't drive, and so it's a challenge, especially since we don't have public transportation that goes up there. Another -- one of the options is, is that we can purchase property. We do have it in our bond fund, that we can purchase property someplace in a more centrally located area and build a one, two, or three -- we don't have to put it all together on one site. We can build a bus yard, technology center, district office one place, we can build Peninsula in another place. So we have the options of putting it all together in one complex, or separating it out and putting it into two or three different sites. We can upgrade Crestmore, or the entire site. That would entail us probably tearing down some of the buildings and building a, you know, a school and putting our facilities back up there. Or we can build it on one of the other locations that we currently own, which is one of our comprehensive sites. All three of those options have pros and cons. All three of those options have costs that are, like if we purchase property, that's $20 million, $30 million that we couldn't put into our, you know, renovating some of our other sites. Putting it on a comprehensive site, there are pros and cons, and I'm sure you've heard it's been in the paper for the last few months, that there are concerns about putting it on the comprehensive sites. Building up at, rebuilding up at Crestmore is a long-term commitment for the school district as far as, you know, that means that we're going to retain that property for a long, long time. So there's pros and cons to everything that we do, and the board was meeting with its interest. You have more people here than we do at a normal school board meeting. We usually have two or three, and they sit in the back of the room and they kind of nod, and we were doing this in January, February. Well, we've actually been working on this for about 18 months. January, February, we were all looking around going, we're heading towards a decision, and nobody knows we're even talking about it. So I've been going out with my staff to everywhere that I can possibly find a gathering and explaining what is going on in front of the board, and, you know, we can -- democracy can be messy, and we have generated a lot of comments over the course of the last two months. We feel better for it because at least now people are engaged, they know what we're trying to do in the decisions that are sitting in front of the board. So I can go into great, like I said, I can go into great detail, I can go through the pros and cons in great detail of all the various different things, but if you've had a chance to look at some of the material, I'm here to actually listen, answer some questions, have staff answer questions, and I think that might be a good use of our time.
So you're still planning on trying to relocate Peninsula, and you want to consolidate some maintenance facilities in a more central location? Is that correct?
We're looking at one of three options as far as upgrading the Peninsula facilities. One of the options is just rebuilding where it's at right now. Again, there's pros and cons to that. Buying property is another one, or putting it on a comprehensive site. We also want to consolidate all of the -- we're scattered all over the place as far as our maintenance yard, our bus yards, our food service facilities, our technology. So we do want to consolidate as much of that as we possibly can. Doesn't have to be with Penn, it can be in a separate location.
So at this point, you don't have any long-term plans for the site? We're getting calls all the time from people saying, what are they thinking? They're going to do something, they're going to develop, and what's going to happen? I mean, where does that all stand now? I understand the economy's been down, and values have been down and stuff, but if things perk up as they seem to be a little bit, what's your long-term plan?
Well, currently, the board right now has not talked. Since we figured out how to defees the $75 million in COPs, we just look at it as an asset, a long-term asset. There have been no conversations about doing anything with it, actually, because we don't anticipate the need to have, the need to have to do anything with it. And so I would say unless something comes up that we can't anticipate, we've been trying to find a tenant. I mean, we've been trying to find, you know, charter schools come in there, private schools. We've been actively going out looking for tenants to rent the property, and that's, I would say, is about as far as a long-term commitment. We have to make this decision, and then it'll be three to five years before it can actually come to fruition. So that's about how far out we've looked as far as, you know, what's going to go on. For the next five years, and again, I'm using that, knowing how long it gets, how long it takes things to get through construction and design and all that, we're looking three to five years before we would even be able, if we decide to move Penn, it'll be that long before we have to get down that path.
Any questions? Rico?
To the chair. I was at one of those meetings at the Little Theater at Cappuccino, so you, I still recall, so I'm sure you still do because you were in front of the stage. Some of the concerns of the residents, as what the mayor indicated. We do get calls. It's assumed that with the Measure O that passed that the, you wouldn't be clearing out of the site eventually, which seems to be on that path, in order to actually get rid of that surplus property and to sell it, and then, of course, that's where the residents, especially in that neighborhood and the area, have great concerns, as you heard that night as I did. The other thing is, is that we've had throughout the times, Mr. Johnson, Sam Johnson, who stood there, and my former principal at CAP, and I said, you know, is this going to be it as far as coming back and asking for another measure, another partial tax? You know, the answer was yes, but however, something else came up. So I guess I'm wondering, and I know I get this question, is so they move, they get property, and they go down the path again. Are they going to be coming back to us, asking for more? And yes, I've been to CAP, and it certainly is a different school than when I was there. And it's beautiful. Took a little bit, a couple of measures, to get it accomplished, some cost overrides, honestly, that didn't accomplish it the first time around. So I think that's some of the things, is the property surplus, as the mayor indicated, and just as far as the management, managing of the funds and whether or not everything's going to get accomplished this time.
I would say that we've gone through three measures, Measure D, Measure M, and now we're in Measure O. What you're seeing right now is, so Measure D happened well before I was here, and the cost overruns that you were talking about, especially if Sam was standing up here talking about it, that was a long time ago for us and the board, and the board's actually turned over quite a bit since that point in time because of some of the issues that happened with Measure D. Measure M has been amazing. We have been able to do so many more things than we actually even said we were going to do. We put solar, that has created a boon for our general fund. We've been able to generate revenue streams out of this bond measure, and we've done so much more than we actually anticipated out of Measure M. We're thinking that Measure O finishes it off. That's our goal, that's our belief, and if things keep going the way that things are going, I would say that that's a fairly strong statement, that we won't be looking to go out, again, unless something happens in the economy that we need to go out for a parcel tax. But we have no, there's no anticipation now to go out for anything at all.
Thank you. You mentioned that there are several pros and cons to looking at all of the options that you're considering, and then you also said that there's really no long-term analysis that's been done on the current campus in terms of what could be done with it, whether it would be sold or leased out. So I'm wondering, is the financial aspect of this not one of those things that's being factored, and how could you actually make that decision without understanding what the opportunity cost of that property is and how that would impact your decision?
One of our biggest concerns right now that we're facing as a district is we have growth, and it seems really strange because the growth is all in the southern part of the district, and we actually are facing, I don't know, in the northern part of the district, we're actually seeing a decline in enrollment. But we anticipate that over the course of the next eight to 10 years, we're going to see a rise of maybe 2,000 students. It's a possibility. So having been in education for over 30 years and having seen properties be sold off as assets because of the time you don't think you need it or whatever, we've been actually, as a staff, been pushing that it would not make sense for us, knowing that we're facing growth, to sell off an asset. What we do not want to have happen, though, is have an asset not be used in some -- we look for revenue streams every place we possibly can, and again, that's why we've been going out trying to find somebody that would be willing to rent the property, because there's a lot of extra empty space up there. Peninsula only takes up a small portion of it. So we've been actively trying to find other renters to go into it, and that's where we're at, is that I don't believe there's a long-term plan. Again, I'm speaking for myself, not the school board, because I can't do that. There hasn't been any discussion about selling the property. It's been about what's best for the kids and the Peninsula students, and then what do we do with the asset to not lose it as an asset, but to generate revenue off of it somehow, some way.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and please keep us posted.
Okay. And if you -- I'm just saying, could you introduce the, since they made the trip and they had to sit here polite and look interested, could you maybe introduce some of the --
Why don't you go ahead? Kirk, go ahead, sir. Do it at the podium so that you're on, you're on TV, yeah, all the way over there.
Kirk Plack, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources and Administrative Services.
Ron Campana, New Assistant Principal at Peninsula High School.
I'm Kindy Stump, Director of Attendance and Welfare and Alternative Programs.
Dawn Scatena, the Principal of Peninsula High School.
Right. Thank you.
And just, I would like to say Connie has been work, I think we have a good working relationship and feel comfortable calling and talking to each other, and I really want to make sure that you understand, we're trying to do outreach so people don't get surprised by what's going on, and any comments that you have or that you want to forward to us from your community, please do so. We look forward to that, and I will share that with the board.
We will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five, review of the agenda. We have a couple of changes this evening. First of all, I would like to move, without objection, item number 12, which is the annual report of the Planning Commission, to right after item number eight, public hearings. And it looks like with the suggestion, at the suggestion of our city attorney, we're going to remove from this evening's agenda items 10B and item 11, which both have to do with redevelopment, successor agencies, and he's informed us that without the five of us here, two have to be recused anyway, that we would be, it would be difficult to vote on this this evening. So we're going to be taking 10B and 11 off of the agenda this evening, and it will be noticed when we're going to meet on those in the very, very near future. Let's see. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 12, 2012, and city council closed session of June 12, 2012. Any errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing none, they will be approved as submitted. And a consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implement and early or council action that may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
If not, move to approve.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. We'll hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions approving the city manager's recommended 2012-2013 general fund, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds. And then approving the city's appropriations limit of $32,359,865 for fiscal year 2012-2013, which is the GAN limit.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, part of our presentation tonight, although abbreviated, will be repetitious of the two study sessions that the city council conducted on June 6th and June 13th. We want to provide an opportunity for members of the public who might not have been able to either view or attend these study session meetings to have a general idea about the organizing principles that are incorporated into this budget. Before I move to the actual detailed budget comments, I wanted to make a couple of comments on items that were discussed by members of the public who did take the opportunity to attend the study sessions on June 6th and June 13th. And particularly, there were two comments that I wanted to respond to tonight and provide additional information for the city council and for the public. The first item pertains to a concern that firefighters are allowed and utilizing time while on duty to shop for groceries for their living situation in the firehouse during their on-duty time, which, as the city council is well aware, includes 24-hour shifts, consecutive 20 days, 24-hour shifts. The concern that was articulated by a member of the public had to do with whether there was a safety problem when apparatus and firefighters are out of their normal assigned district or territory. And although the police, I'm sorry, the fire chief answered that question that night, I want to answer it again, and to make sure that that information is not left unresponded to in the public domain. The short answer to that issue or that question, that comment, is that the firefighters are allowed to take care of that normal business during their assigned work shift. In addition to shopping for groceries, as they do very quickly, they are also taking the opportunity of being in the public arena to discuss and disseminate fire prevention information to members of the public, and they do that routinely as part of their assigned responsibilities. But beyond that, in terms of responding to calls, as the council is well aware, we operate under a boundary DOP and joint deployment program countywide within San Mateo County under this system. Fire apparatus are dispatched from the nearest location, whether or not they are assigned specifically to that particular locale or district. And the public safety is not compromised by a particular apparatus being either out of district or out of service. Typically, what is, what happens when a fire apparatus is not in its assigned location for any reason, and that could include because firefighters are on mandated training or that they are performing other assigned functions, the next available apparatus may be required, whether or not it's in the same jurisdiction or not. For example, in our case, apparatus out of South City might need to move up and be positioned in order to take that next call. So again, there is no deficit to public safety, and the regional deployment program is deliberately intended to provide for those kinds of situations that may arise for a variety of different reasons when apparatus and firefighters are out of their, of their normal territory. The second issue, and again, this is something that I wanted to cover for the benefit of public information, had to do with the water and wastewater rates that remain under consideration and final action by the city council. And specifically, there was a comment at your last city council meeting, a, at the public podium, a speaker from the public provided information that suggested that the water and wastewater rates were not, on average, being considered at a 9.8 percent, I'm sorry, the water rates were not being considered accurately at a 9.8% average increase level, but in fact, the rates might vary as much as increase 30 to 40 to 50%. The speaker returned at your second study session on June 13th and presented revised information, which we have copies of available to the public either through the city clerk's office or tonight on the desk by the door to the meeting room, which, again, the speaker corrected his own statements by providing this information in a chart and a graph that shows that the water rates are in fact increasing by between 6.4% and 11.2%, depending on water usage. And this is very much consistent with what staff presented to you during the previous rate review proceedings that were conducted by the city council in, during which we identified that the water rates depend in large measure upon the amount of water that's actually used, and so the 9.8% is really an average based on water use as it is averaged out over the entire customer base, but may or may not be specifically related to any individual household's actual percentage increase. So I hope that clarifies those two items that were raised during the study session. Moving on to the budget itself, Kim Duran, our Finance Director, will cover part of the presentation, and I will cover some of the policy areas that this budget covers. In short, this budget, like those of the now several preceding years, continues to focus on a very strict adherence to what we call "hold the line expenditure budgeting", where all expenditures are carefully scrutinized to make sure that they are the lowest possible amount that is necessary in order to continue providing the service as it is consistent with city council policy. There are a number of issues which impact the expenditure as well as the revenue program. Those issues include the need to address long-term deferred, particularly capital needs related to our facilities, but a variety of other deferred operational needs. There's continuing uncertainty that persists literally to today, although the picture has cleared substantially, and that relates to the loss of redevelopment and how that will ultimately affect the city, both in terms of its ability to continue efforts towards productive economic development, as well as the direct revenue loss related to a variety of activities that the city has historically conducted through its redevelopment agency. Budget focuses on a continuing aggressive program that has arisen over the past two years and will continue for the foreseeable future to bring about full recovery and rebuilding of the Crestmore neighborhood that was so tragically and dramatically affected by the September 9th, 2010 explosion and fire. And then lastly, we are, as the city council is aware, continuing in negotiations with all of the employee bargaining units, leaving a situation of some amount of uncertainty as to the final resolution of those negotiations and the salary and benefits program for the next period of time. As such, this budget is built around the continuing assumptions of the existing labor agreements, which call for, as the council is aware, a relatively significant reduction in employee salary and benefit costs that has occurred over the past three years with the concession bargaining that has resulted in containment of medical premium increase costs, as well as furlough for all employees in the city organization. This budget, in addition to addressing that, those variety of issues, also addresses a couple of supplemental, what we call supplemental budget proposals that are presented to you and are summarized in the budget document in greater detail, that are, we consider to be important and necessary to continue reasonable delivery of service, but have been packaged in a manner that, in fact, the net cost of the proposals in total is actually very, very small. So the total cost of the -- So, the, the total cost of the, of the program is netted by where expenditures are proposed to increase. There are other areas, particularly in reorganization in two areas of the city, in the Community Services Department and in the administrative departments. Some cost savings combined with some increased cost results in a relatively small total net cost of approximately $90,000. I'm going to ask Kim Duran to walk through some of the financial aspects of the budget for your information tonight, and I want to, at first, identify that while the budget, and you will hear from Kim, that we're pleased to be able to report some improvement in annual ongoing revenues, that there still remains a number of challenges, some of which I outlined earlier in the presentation, but that remain as challenges to the, to the city organization, particularly as we look at the long-term future. We've seen, for example, what the impact of a pretty significant disaster can create in terms of cost. Fortunately, in this particular disaster, the city is not being impacted by cost as a result of the financial arrangements that we were able to negotiate with PG&E, but among other things, preparedness for disaster and the potential financial effects of that, deferred maintenance of city facilities, as well as a variety of other topics, continue to, in our, in our still relatively constrained financial situation, continue to be at issue and will need our attention over the next 12 months as we, as we address the potential opportunity to see some improvement in revenues, and we continue to grapple with the variety of issues that continue to challenge the city organization. So with that, I'll ask Kim to give you a more detailed review of both revenues and expenditures outlined in this budget.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm going to just spend a few minutes recapping what we discussed at the study sessions, focusing only on the general fund right now. On the revenue side, just want to walk through the assumptions that we made as far as developing the general fund budget for 2012, '13. What we've discussed since the mid-year budget review and in anticipation of building this budget, we have experienced an increase in taxes in the city, primarily in the areas of sales tax and transient occupancy tax. We are anticipating a continued increase into the 12, '13 fiscal year. In addition, the loss of redevelopment while having a very dramatic impact on the general fund, an adverse impact on the general fund, there is a small benefit that the city will receive additional property tax as a result of the elimination of redevelopment, so we have factored in some growth in property tax as a result of the elimination of redevelopment. The restoration of COPS funding occurred just after the adoption of the 2011, '12, 2011, '12 budget, so the 12, '13 incorporates that, that $100,000 of COPS funding in lieu of motor vehicle license fees that we previously received. There was a budget swap that essentially took away the VLF fees and then provided us with the COPS fees, so those sort of netted themselves out. We have an increase in the fire revenues as a result of a shared services agreement for a shared mechanic with Central County Fire. We have factored in the receipt of building permit fees from the Crestmore rebuilds, as well as Cedar Mills. So those are all positives on the revenue side. On the reduction side, we have the factor of redevelopment, the elimination of redevelopment. There's a loss of what used to come into the general fund as allocations, the recovery of costs associated with general administration salaries that were budgeted or that were recovered from the redevelopment agency. That was a reduction of $780,000 in the budget annually, as well as the reduction with the city previously received in interest payment from the redevelopment agency for advances made to the agency. That interest payment has essentially been eliminated as things currently stand, so overall, a reduction of approximately $950,000 to offset that. So, the numbers, as they stack up, the 12, '13 proposed budget in comparison to the 11, '12 amended budget, as you can see, even with all the positives, the increases in taxes, as well some of the departmental revenue increases, we had an overall budget-to-budget comparison with the 12, '13 budget to, in comparison to the current year amended budget, a reduction of $424,000 in revenues. On the expenditure side, as we previously discussed, this has been a hold-the-line budget that attempted to reduce costs without having service reductions wherever possible. There were a number of reductions that were made in individual department budgets that were identified in the course of the budget preparation process that were highlighted during the 12, '13 budget study sessions. As the City Manager already mentioned, the existing negotiated salary and benefit reductions do remain in effect in the 12, '13 budget expenditures and projections, given the uncertainty of those agreements. There are supplemental budget requests that have been previously highlighted, which include the reorganizations, as well as some other enhancements that resulted in net decrease of $14,000 for the general fund. The 11, '12, the current year budget, was also the final year of the debt service payment for the City Hall remodel, so in 12, '13, that debt service payment is eliminated. And finally, another factor in the 12, '13 budget was the, was the fact that we no longer had redevelopment to allocate either staff salaries to, as well as the programs that were previously funded by redevelopment, now had to find a new home in the general fund, and so that was another factor that we had to take into account as we developed this budget. So that all said and done, what we ended up with is a 12, '13 proposed budget that actually brings in expenditures $295,000 below the current year amended budget. The current year amended budget, as you'll keep in mind, mid-year, was adjusted to reflect the reallocation of items that were previously funded by redevelopment in the general fund. But overall, with the reductions that we identified during the study session, we were able to bring forward a budget that was reduced by nearly $300,000 in the general fund. So, at the end, where we ended up was with a operating surplus, a small operating surplus of just over $90,000. When you take into account the supplemental budget requests that were presented separately, the reduction of $14,000, as well as the purchase of three marked police vehicles, those were presented during the second budget study session as part of the equipment purchase section. Those account for $90,000. When you factor in all those changes, where we end up is a change in fund balance, a positive change in fund balance, without the use of one-time reserves or revenues to balance the budget of just over $15,000. Very quickly, I'd like to just touch upon, there's two items that are, two action items before you tonight, the first being the approval of the budget. The second item is the approval of the GAN limit. I just want to very quickly walk through what the GAN limit is. In 1979, the voters approved what was called Proposition 4, referred to as the GAN limit, which essentially creates a restriction on the amount of tax revenue that can be appropriated every year. Essentially, what it does is it took a base expenditures from 1978, 1979, and you're able to adjust that every year by an index of cost-of-living adjustment, as well as a population growth factor that is provided to us by the State Department of Finance. So the revenues that are subject to the GAN limit are just tax-generated revenues, which for San Bruno are four categories: property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and business tax. When you add up all those proceeds of taxes and make adjustments for some exclusions that are allowed under the GAN limit calculation, we end up with a proceeds of taxes dollar amount of just 19 million, just over 19.8 million. When we do our calculated GAN appropriation limit, we end up with a number of 32.3 million. So what this is saying is that we are well, the city of San Bruno is well below the GAN appropriations limit. So that concludes my section of the presentation. Do you have anything?
I just wanted to add, this is a, agendized as a public hearing item. We would ask that the City Council open and then close a public hearing before you take action on the budget. We're recommending the budget for approval tonight. Just a call to the Council's attention, the item in the agenda packet that was transmitted to you electronically that transcribes and then answers all of the questions that we received, or at least all of the ones that we, we recorded receiving at the study sessions and then subsequent to the study sessions. So we've, we believe that we have done a reasonable job, at least of providing information that the City Council may need in your deliberations tonight, but we're certainly available to answer any additional questions or to hear your comments. Thank you.
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? All right, this time, we're going to open the public hearing, and any, any members of the public like to speak to the Council regarding this item? All right, if we close the public hearing, we preclude you from talking about this item again. Action?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion or action regarding this budget?
Through the chair. A couple things. With, we just, City Manager discussed about disaster, and not because Erica's in the audience, that those go together, but there was once brought up about in IT, as far as having a backup from all of our computer and data system, from what we have at City Hall, and then I thought it was to have a backup system over at the police station, Plaza. Has that ever been accomplished?
At this point in time, that is a project that has not been completed, that's a project that is being, will be brought forward in, in the 2012, '13 CIP budget, that will be forthcoming in the next month or so.
And that would be included, you believe?
Yes, that is a project in there.
That was on my mind, since I saw you. So, one area that I'm still having a hard time, two areas specifically, is, one is a CMMS system. I appreciate the information that was given. I went back again, as far as, something we started back in '07, the additional costs that seemed to come up. $6,500 was supposed to be divided by four, and obviously, there's support, now there's going into a different division, which means more, which means when we go into another division, water, streets, et cetera, there's going to be, again, more to that. I don't recall when, when we went down this path of all these additional costs. We're talking about more monies to help implement it, we have a management analyst that's going to assist with it, so that's one thing. The second thing is, as far as the reorganization amongst the administration and community services, in light of the Community Development Department and that change that's going to occur, should we maybe step back for 30 days, reevaluate the whole structure of all of that and see what, what fits best going forward? One of my concerns is that I'm looking to, you know, we're talking about senior services and library services under one assistant director. And then I get concerned, we're, we're taking out a library circulation manager, I believe, and then we're taking half of that director and bringing it to the senior center. This is a big task. This has a lot of, a lot of special folks that, that are used to a lot of love, and I think both, both sides deserve it. I get concerned that if we're not going to shortchange senior services or the library. As we were told at the study session, there's about 1,200 folks that go through the library. I actually was walking through it on Saturday, it was on my mind, and I don't know if that fully addresses that. So that is a concern also, I had it just in that restructuring about spreading that thin, and whether there's adequate services to provide what the community and the residents expect in both the areas.
Did you want that addressed? Because I could have a comment, but I don't know if Randy wants to address the library or...
If you were able to answer the question, sure.
Well, I, only because, let me see, I, I use the library often, and so does my family, and my understanding of how this works, and that Randy wants to add the actual statistics and all, first of all, unfortunately, the 1,200, it wasn't, it was misstated, it wasn't 1,200 people that go through, it's 1,200 items that get checked in, I'm sorry, that get checked out a day, it's about 700, I'm sorry, 900 people that go in and out, which is still a huge number. The part of the physical aspect of the library, because it is relatively small compared to the size of the city and the population, is actually getting the items back on the shelves so people can use them and get them out again. So that needs a physical body who picks them up and puts them where they go. And not to say we don't want to have the manager or whatever helping with the programs themselves, we're limited on what programs we can actually do because of the size of the library. So if and when we get a bigger library and we can have more programs, we will definitely need a manager to take care of those things. So my understanding, and what I've talked to people and staff and a variety of other people, that the manager, that the, that the money is going into pages, and the pages actually physically pick up the stuff and put them back on the shelves where people can go and get them, so...
I would say that there are more programs. I would say that we have more population in the community, less staff in the library than when I got on the council, and you have more programs and activities to handicap accessibility and the programs that the director here and there's, the staff has implemented downstairs. So I see it as an increase, both as services with less staff-
Yes.
-and a larger population, so...
Yes, and they do a fabulous job.
Right, so my concern is, have we thought it through enough to where everything succeeds and we're not shortchanging, because you are talking about a limit, not fulfilling a position, and you're going to take the assistant library director and make them there half-time and here half-time, it's not walking across the street, it's coming up the road here. So, again, I just think both areas need to be serviced adequately, and I am concerned about its future.
Randy, you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members, and I do appreciate the concerns and the statements on both sides. It is one of the things that staff has been working with. In addition to the reorganization, I would also point out that as we are losing approximately 18 hours per week of the current Recreation Services managers' time here at the senior center, Wendy's time, and she's been about 18 hours a week for this past year, we are increasing the positions of both Susan Gloria, the two Recreation Services supervisors that are here at the facility, from 80% to 100%, so that they would be picking up some of the extra workload, especially for that, the TLC, that the residents up here have grown accustomed to, and it keeps them up here more often. So essentially, there would be three full-time people up here at the recreations, I mean, up here at the senior center. In terms of the library, comments from Council members on both sides were very accurate. I guess one of the missing pieces of it is that with the RFID, the radio frequency identification, approximately 80% of the books are now checked out by the public themselves, taking away a lot of that workload. And we've redistributed the workload among the managers, so that another piece of that, that is taking the library assistants and having them in charge of the pages, rather than having the former managers in charge of the pages. And that spreads the workload out downward, freeing up a lot of the upper administration's time at the library. I would foresee that the library, the assistant library director, especially initially, might be up here at the senior center 10 hours a week or 12 hours a week, learning the programs and meeting things, working a lot with staff that's up here, Mary, Susan, Gloria, the three Recreation Supervisors, to get a lot of the workload done. But we think at this point that, that we have it covered, but I do appreciate the concern because obviously, the personal touch for the residents or the patrons in both of the facilities is absolutely key and crucial.
Good, and I'm sure we'll, we'll hear how it's working.
Anything on the CMMS? Anything on the CMMS?
I don't have a complete answer for you tonight. We discussed this a bit during the study session, and what I would suggest is, I don't have additional information for the City Council to address any more specific issues. What I would suggest is that I think the interest is warranted, there is a significant investment in this system, and what I would like to do is to suggest that we bring this back to the City Council for a more thorough discussion of both how it will be deployed and what the various cost components are. As we discussed at the study session, there is a change in the support, the product lineup that the vendor will support, and we need to address that if we're going to continue to utilize the system. And as we discussed at the study session, there is a reliance on the system and a high level of utilization that is providing a beneficial service to the wastewater division. There is a need to bring the system up into a more functional capacity for the water and potentially the stormwater division. My suggestion at this point is that we bring this topic back before a further discussion and presentation by staff.
What is your thought, City Manager, as far as with the change in community development? Should we sit back and relook at the whole picture, or do you feel that it's still best to do the reorganization of the various departments now, going and then come up with the short-term and long-term plan, as you alluded to in your email?
Yeah, I don't see a particular overlap between the communities, the reorganization plan that's proposed for the Community Services Department and the pending vacancy in the Community Development Department, if that's the, if that's a specific question. What I would suggest is that the way that the reorganization is structured in the budget is, provides a financial plan and a proposed means of addressing both organizational and operational needs and issues. I think that if it is the City Council's interest that we can, we can provide a additional information or consideration for the City Council, but I would encourage you to approve the budget tonight as it is, subject to your further, your further interest in understanding how the reorganization plan would be, would be implemented. I guess what I'm saying is that I don't see a particular need to defer action, and if the council is interested, we can certainly bring back further discussion.
All right, any discussion or action? We do have two resolutions to approve.
Before you, just, I want to feel very good here, comfortable, to the director, Randy. So, just, you can sit there. You feel comfortable and confident this is the best course at this time for community services? Okay. Professional, I guess we'll give it a shot.
Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Oh, I'm just, I was just reading this. I'd like to introduce the resolution approving the city's appropriation limit, oh no, I'm sorry, that's the second one.
There are two resolutions, one on the budget and one separately on the GAN appropriation. On the budget resolution, I would just call your attention to the fact that there are a great deal of detail articulated in the resolution that go through each of the enterprise funds, the special revenue funds, as well as the general, as well as the general fund. So that's all combined into one resolution.
And Connie, based on what you said, you were saying on the CMMS to, what, go forward? You want to see it approved tonight and then bring it back?
What I would recommend on the CMMS is that you authorize the budget with specific direction that you wish to see a, a, a further presentation about the whole of the CMMS program and its application, and that those expenditures would be subject to your further consideration.
You want to go ahead and say that?
No, she just did. She said it's fine, I saw Carol's type, and she's got it all down.
Okay, I'd like to introduce the resolution approving the city manager's recommendation, adopting the general fund, special revenue fund, and enterprise budgets, with the understanding that they will bring forward a specific report on the-
CMMS.
CM.
Any reorganization?
No. Roll call.
That's her job.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Well, one more resolution, I'd like to introduce the resolution approving the city's appropriation limit of 32 million, et cetera, for fiscal year 2012-2013.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item number 12, we're moving that up, and that is the annual report of the San Bruno Planning Commission. And just before you do that, I would just like to say, in passing, that the staff has done a wonderful job in this budget, very, very difficult, and, you know, we have a couple of study sessions that last a number of hours, but they put, you know, countless hours into preparation of this, so job well done, thank you.
And I did want to say, it was alluded to at the budget study session, but the way it was put in the binder and how it flowed was much easier to follow and reference and going back and forth, rather than having it chopped up, and so that was a huge help. Thank you.
Thank you. Your honor.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to present the report for 2011 summary, as well as the outlook for 2012. As you know, the planning commission, the members of the council include myself, the commission include myself, vice chair Bielsari, Commissioner Marshall, Johnson, Chase, Peterson, Samud, as well as, we have our city council liaison, council member Sazhar. So some significant activities in 2011, we've seen the Crestmore neighborhood rebuilding, held about eight special architectural review committee meetings, and just to highlight, this allowed us to process these applications through one meeting, instead of doing the regular one ARC review plus a planning commission meeting, so this was really helpful for us to go ahead and expedite the rebuilding process. We also held two joint, joint sessions for zoning code update. Another significant update was the approval of the Cedar Mills subdivision, which included 14 new homes, and below there's an image of one of the houses. As far as the commercial and residential projects are concerned, 2011, we had a similar activity level to 2010, with, with a fair number of increase in residential projects. There were about 15 commercial projects, which went through architectural review and use permits, and a total of 18 residential use applications. So as far as goals of 2012 is concerned, we will continue to hold special architectural review meetings in order to facilitate the Crestmore rebuild, and as well as complete the zoning code update, we would like to build upon the sustainability audit, hold more joint city council study sessions, we held two last year, so I felt that they were really helpful. I learned a lot about chickens.
They died. My chickens are gone.
I'm sorry. And we'd like to review new code language and recommend, you know, approval to the city council on that regard as well. And as far as, another goal of 2012 would be the approval of the transit corridor plan. This has been going on for a while. It was part of the redevelopment agency project, but I believe it's gone through the draft EIR process, and now references to the redevelopment agency is being taken out for final general plan amendments, and we would like to have a recommendation for, for the city council approval on this. Another goal in 2012 is to continue, continue and process, sorry, continue to process and review quality applications. One of the benefits that we have as, as part of the commission, we've got a wonderful staff, which gives us excellent reports, and it has made our jobs much easier in order to go through the ARC review, as well as the planning commission. And through those reports, we're able to expedite or feel comfortable approving projects, moving them forward, and there are minor changes that we feel comfortable moving forward and giving the city staff enough leverage in facilitating those projects. We also anticipate in 2012, 2013, that there'll be, there'll be a significant increase in development, there are more developers moving into the peninsula, and we feel comfortable that as the economy improves, we'll have more projects, and I hope we can go back to two planning commission and two ARC review meetings like we had in the good old days. Lastly, I'd like to thank you for, for setting policy direction, for allowing us the flexibility to, to have the, to have the guidance of the department, to have enough staff to actually have reports that make sense, that we feel comfortable approving. We also feel comfortable that the, that the, that the city gives enough direction to the applicants, so they feel comfortable that their project that they're getting approved is something that they would desire at the end of the project, not just at the beginning, so I feel very comfortable about that. Also, I'm looking forward to future collaborations. If there are any questions?
Any questions? Just want to say thank you to you and all of the members of the planning commission. We couldn't survive here in the city without our boards, commissions, and committees, you put in a lot of time, and-
Thank you.
-a number of years ago, I was on the planning commission before I was elected to the council, and I know it's, it's a real hands-on commission, and you visit sites, you meet people, you actually get into the thick of things, so it can be difficult, but it can be very rewarding. So congratulations and thank all the members for us.
Thank you.
Item number nine is public comment, and item's not on the agenda, is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment?
Hi, John Barrellier, San Anselmo Avenue. I received this response from the acting city attorney. Mr. Barrellier, this acknowledges your June 6, 2012 Public Records Act request, which the city received on June 6, 2012, requesting a log of all fire dispatchers, dispatches for 2011, with locations and time of each fire truck when it was dispatched. In response to your request, the City of San Bruno Fire Department does not track the location of fire apparatus, parentheses, fire engine, truck, or battalion chief when they are dispatched. The general location is considered to be within their quote "home district," or the district to which they've been moved per public safety communications directions to maintain area-wide coverage, or another assignment such as for training, inspections, or public education details. Therefore, we have no records responsive to your public records request. Let us know if you have any questions. On January 6, 2009, I presented to the city council a letter examining city workers' leisure at his coffee time, and this and other presentations, I put forth a not-so-new idea of installing a GPS in all city vehicles. After all, it makes good business sense to know where all your vehicles are at all times, where they were, and for how long, especially when your most expensive vehicles cost nearly a million. So how many fire trucks does San Bruno have, times the cost of one? And you have no record of the dispatches? A business principle neglected? I'll bet that most businesses know even where their computers are. Because of your brief letter, I'm expanding my request to ask specifically where each San Bruno fire truck was located at the exact time of the Crestmore explosion. It is beyond my lay comprehension that when a fire truck leaves a firehouse, there is no log. It seems simple enough, fire truck number 52, dispatched to an emergency call at 428 Hazel, or fire truck 120, dispatched to Highway 280, Car Fire, or fire truck 50, dispatched to Lenardi's Shopping. So I have three strong suggestions. Again, put a GPS in each city vehicle, including but not limited to fire trucks and police cars. Initiate belatedly, though it may be, the practice of logging each dispatch from our fire trucks, including time, date, and upon return, the outcome of the dispatch. Number three, eliminate the practice of firemen shopping on city time, whether it's for the firehouse or otherwise. You leave the public vulnerable when you do this. If shopping is necessary online, necessary, do it online. We would rather be rescued by six firemen instead of three. A hero is a hero when he shows up on time, not when he's late and shorthanded. Please don't tell me the firehouse is covered when you're missing a fire truck and three firefighters at Lenardi's or Molly Stone's. It is one thing to show a man that he is in error, another to put him in possession of the truth. When a firefighter makes $14,000 a month, I expect him to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rico?
Honorable mayor and city council, I want to update you on mosquitoes and goats in San Bruno. I'm happy to report that there's no new mosquito problems in San Bruno, but the goats have arrived. As you are aware, the county recently confirmed the first West Nile virus positive in a bird found in Woodside. As of today, San Bruno continues to have recorded no positives. The district continues to remind the residents to dump all standing water. I provided the city clerk with the district flyer advising of the upcoming Millsfield helicopter treatments that will start on Tuesday, July 10th, to control the possible breeding of mosquitoes in the standing water under the Tules in Millsfield, as they've done in the last number of years, there'll be at least four treatments on about a, every four-week basis. I'm providing a copy of this flyer to the Parks Department. As always, questions can be directed to the district at 344-8592. Secondly, as Michael McCarron from San Francisco International Airport advised the council recently, the airport provided goats would arrive to eat the yearly fire break for approximately 15 to 20 feet east along the Seventh Avenue property lines. I talked to personnel out there earlier today, and on my way coming in tonight, the goats have arrived, so hopefully they will eat in the, in the right place prior to the Fourth of July, and we will have that extra safety buffer. And on a final note, Farmer's Market is still every Sunday in the Tanfor Inn Shopping Center parking lot off of El Camino, right now it's next to where the firework booths are, nine to one, we hope everyone will attend and watch it grow. Thank you, or I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, continuing with Congress of Business, item 10A, which is our last item, receive report and adopt resolution authorizing the issuance of pension obligation bonds to refinance the outstanding side fund obligation of the city to the California Public Employees Retirement Fund and authorizing the institution of judicial validation proceedings.
Thank you. Bit of a mouthful there. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, I, I touched on this topic back at the second budget study session, so I'm just going to review some of what I discussed at that time. So as you'll recall, back in 2003, CalPERS combined retirement plans for those agencies that had fewer than 100 employees in a unit into groups, into risk pools, in an attempt to reduce the volatility of employer contribution rates. Our safety pool, our police and fire- Our safety pool, our police and fire, was one of those groups that was merged into a risk pool. At the time that the police and fire, the safety unit, was merged into the risk pool, a, what was called an unfunded liability was assessed at that point in time, which essentially is amortized over a twenty-five-year period to the city for repayment. So at that point in time that the city joined that risk pool, there was that outstanding amount that was owed, and that is going to be amortized, that has been amortized over twenty-five years. As of our most recent PERS actuarial evaluation report in October 2011, that outstanding side fund stands at just over thirteen point one million. That accounts for eleven point eight percent of our total at the employer's contribution rate, basically one-third. The employer contribution rate for the safety employees is just over thirty-six point six percent currently. And of that thirty-six point six percent, eleven point eight of that consists of the repayment of the side fund. The rate of interest that the city is charged on this side fund is seven point seven five percent. We do know that that rate will be lowered come July 2013 to seven point five percent. However, staff believes that even at this reduced rate of return, that there are significant, potential significant savings from refunding the side fund through the issuance of bonds or another form of debt at a much lower interest rate. In order to issue pension obligation bonds, the city must first attain what is called a judgment validating that the CalPERS side fund and the debt, the issuance of the pension obligation bonds, are in fact a debt obligation created by law. We're not going out and issuing new debt, that this is a debt that already exists, and that we are essentially just refinancing, refunding that existing debt. So the action that is being presented before you tonight authorizes the beginning of the judicial validation proceedings, and it signifies the city's intent to pursue the issuance of pension obligation bonds. It does not authorize the actual issuance of bonds. That's not something we're prepared to do at this time. It essentially just gets the clock running on obtaining this validation, as that process alone is anticipated to take somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety to a hundred and twenty days. And during this time, while that validation process is occurring, the city can work with its outside financial advisor to put together a proposed financing plan that will be brought back to the City Council for further review. If the city does move forward with the issuance of pension obligation bonds at a later date, all costs associated with the issuance of that transaction would be incorporated into the financing. However, if the city chooses, was to choose not to pursue the issuance of bonds, the judicial validation process, there is a cost of seventy-five hundred dollars involved with this process that we would have to pay, should we choose not to move forward with the issuance of the bonds. So that concludes my presentation. I would also like to point out that Craig Betancourt, our financial advisor from Prager Sealean Company, as well as David Fama of Jones Hall, who would serve as bond counselor, are both here tonight to answer any specific questions that you might have about this process.
All right. Any questions of staff or consultants?
No.
Michael? Rico? This is a resolution. Would someone like to adopt that resolution? Introduce the resolution for adoption.
I guess I'm on a roll. I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
So we've done everything else except report of comments from council members?
To the chair. And I always appreciate residents coming up and offering their views, suggestions, thoughts, and criticisms. I was going to say, just as a personal note, I was on El Camino just the other day and saw in San Bruno Fire Station a South San Francisco fire truck. And coming north-south, going past, before even the San Bruno Station, was a Millbrae fire truck. So they are always around going through different areas. I've also done some of my own, you know, looking into it further after you brought it up, out of courtesy and respect to you. I think sometimes when we look at the global picture of it, and not one nuance of it, you may understand that maybe they do shop at Costco when it comes to their items. When I say they, I mean online or on their off time, when it comes to their common stuff that they utilize in the refrigerator or the breakfast foods. That maybe they are shopping one time, and they go and they do it for, at lunchtime, but also for their dinnertime. Or maybe there's also the thing, if somebody arrives with the food for that night, and they're on a call, and there's nobody at fifty-two, what do they do? So I think before just focusing and doing that, I think it's also helpful to see the bigger picture. That's why I went and did some homework myself. And my understanding, if my history is correct, that at Station Fifty-Two on Earl, at the unfortunate time of the explosion, they were there. And I will say that I am proud of them, Fifty-One, the staff, and everybody that works for the city on how they responded that night and subsequently. So I think we need to look at the, a big picture when we start focusing on something and be fair and equitable. And I have done some homework, and we can talk after the meeting.
Any other comments from council members? Since we're on the subject of police and fire, I just want to say, please have a very safe and sane Fourth of July, a week from tomorrow, please. And if there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned until our next city council meeting, July 10th, right here.